Let me know when you're ready to go, Pete. All right, well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Monday, March 20th of 2017. Welcome to spring. At this time, I will call the meeting to order, and we will do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Shelley, you want to do roll call for us?
One, yes, give me one second. Go ahead and do the consent agenda, give me one second.
Do the consent.
A motion that we approve. I make a motion we approve the consent.
Hang on, hang on, I gotta, let me, let me do this. We will do the approval of the consent agenda, so I will look for a motion in a second. Motion by Bruce and second by John, they beat you out, Beth. Any questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll look for council action, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. What did you say? Oh, that's Roby, you're late again, Roby. I were, what the heck was that? All right, Don, we know you're there now. All right, Shelley. Your turn.
Sorry, forgot my paper on my desk. I'll get it together eventually. All right, Albertson.
Here.
Bueller. Danforth.
Here.
Manti.
Here.
Reeffenberger.
Here.
Roby.
Here.
Solom.
Here.
Thorson.
Here.
Tupper.
Here.
Philhauer.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Shelley. This time, I'll look for a motion, a second for approval of the agenda.
So move.
Motion by Randy, second by Beth. Any questions, changes? Hearing none, I'll look for council action, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number three, application for a temporary location transfer and return of retail on-sale liquor license owned by Cloud Nine Golf Course Incorporated doing business as Cloud Nine Golf Course as follows. A, from the period of 4:00 PM, March 24th of 2017 to 12:00 AM, March 25th of 2017, from 625 20th Avenue Southeast to 1910 West Kemp. At this time, I will open the public hearing, if there's anybody that wants to speak in favor of or against this, this is your opportunity. I was wondering, what the heck is Lisa doing here?
Lisa Carco here as a board member of the Boys and Girls Club.
And you can call me your honor if you want. It's okay.
Yeah. And your honor, we are here today hoping there'd be no objections to the transfer of the liquor license for the Boys and Girls Club's camel races, which will be held this Friday, March 24th, and we hope that all of you will come.
I was just gonna say, if nobody's ever been to them, that's sitting here, you need to go, it's a blast, so.
It is fun, and, and we have, the city of Watertown is sponsoring a camel again this year. I think this is our third time.
Yes, and the city won best dressed derby attire last year.
They're, they're gonna get it again, I just know it, yeah. Any others that want to speak in favor of or against this? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing, I will look for a motion, a second for discussion. Motion by Beth, second by Glenn, any questions? Hearing none, I'll look for council action, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa. B, from the period after 12:01 AM, March 25th of 2017, from 1910 West Kemp Avenue to 625 20th Avenue Southeast, moving the license back. So at this time, I will open the public hearing, if there's anyone who wants to speak in favor of or against this, this is your opportunity. Okay, here we go, let's get this one. Hearing, hearing none, I will close the public hearing, I will look for a motion, a second for, for discussion. Motion by Bruce. Second by Brad. Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, I will look for council action, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number four, application for a new retail on-off sale malt beverage license to Optimal Success Two Incorporated doing business at 1000 Degrees Pizzeria of Watertown at 2631 10th Avenue Southeast. At this time, I will open the public hearing, if there's anyone that wants to speak in favor of or against this, this is your opportunity.
Hello, everyone, I'm Carl Larson, I'm the owner of Thousand Degrees Pizza. I'm sure some of you have heard about it through our grand opening we had for free pizza a couple Thursdays ago, which was a huge success, so yeah, just hope we get the opportunity, we wanted to sell beer there as well. It just kind of adds on to our whole thing, we got pizza, wings, salads, and we want to add beer to that collection as well. So, yeah, it's been going great so far, so thank you for the welcome, for everything, we had the nice ceremony with ribbon cutting that day as well, and it's been nothing but nonstop since, so, yeah.
You know, I tried to get there on that Thursday, but the line was all the way down to Chinawalk.
It was pretty far, it was really cold.
It was amazing, but my wife got one.
Yeah, she was, she was interviewed by.
Yeah, she was.
Live on Facebook, yeah.
She made it on the day, the day of, the free pizza day?
Oh, yeah.
That's awesome. Yeah, it was great.
Any questions for this guy up there?
Do you really cook the pizza at a thousand degrees?
Yeah, so.
I've had people ask me that, I guess, I have.
To clarify, well, okay, so the deck's 750, it's a rotating stone deck, and that's 750 degrees, but the air temperature is 1100 plus degrees for it to bake at that. So, to, to get the deck that hot, it has to be like 1150 degrees for that to heat up that hot. So, it's above a thousand degrees, believe it or not. It's hot, it, it's hot, yeah. And it's two minutes, it's two minutes cook time, that's real too, it's literally in there for two minutes and it's out, so. It's quick, yeah.
It was very good pizza, thank you.
Great.
Any other comments from the public?
Thank you, appreciate it.
Hearing none, I will close the public hearing, I will look for a motion, a second for discussion. Motion by Beth, second by Glenn, any questions? Hearing none, I'll look for council action, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? I'm sorry. Don, you threw me off on that one again. Okay. It is approved. Here we go, let's move on, thanks. Thank you very much, and, and it's gonna be a great place for Watertown, appreciate it. All right, get my bearings squared away here again. Number five, second reading of ordinance number 17-11, amending zoning district boundaries by rezoning Gilbert Sedition from an R4 manufactured homes residential district to an R3 multifamily residential district. At this time, I will open a public hearing, if there's anyone who wants to speak in favor of or against this, this is your opportunity. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing, I'll look for a motion, a second, so we can have discussion.
So move.
Motion by Dan, second by Randy. Okay, Shane, you want to fill us in on this?
Sure, thank you, mayor. The proposed rezoning is for the proposed expansion of the LATI facility. They want to build a robotics unit within this hatched area that I have on the screen. And, so, they're gonna build a parking lot and a new building for the robotics program. And previously, this area existed as part of a mobile home park, which is no longer there. And, so, it's actually owned by three different entities, but they all went together with the petition and, and are rezoning this with the anticipation of the building of the robotics and related parking area. So, we're just now starting to look at the plans that have come in on that facility, should be a pretty, pretty neat thing to have built up there, so.
Any questions for Shane on this? Hearing none, I'll look for council action, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. You know, I'm just gonna throw this little bit in, right now, the robotics are in a small garage over there on the very north end of the Lake Area School, and that's an amazing program there. They're building things, pulling things, it's, it's just really something. Okay, we will move on.
You don't suppose they're gonna replace us one of these days, do you?
They are, they're working on it, Randy, that's what I heard. Okay. Number six, second reading of ordinance number 17-12. I think I'm losing everybody here today, aren't I? There's just no authority figure here today. It's spring fever, I'm just thinking so. All right, so it's second reading ordinance number 17-12, amending section 21.2303 and chapter 21.90, other revised ordinance of the city of Watertown regarding RG Residential Garage District. I will open a public hearing, if there's anybody here that wants to speak in favor of or against, this is your opportunity.
Okay, I do want to add that.
Yes, I was gonna do.
From the first reading, and I want this just to be part of the official public hearing.
Okay.
So, from the first reading to this reading, we did include one new item, which amended the maximum structure height to 30 feet. The previous structure height max was 24 feet, but since we're allowing the long, the larger sidewalls, we also needed to add to the maximum structure height.
Right, so we are not going to do council action on this tonight, we'll move that forward to the next council meeting, just to be in the requirements of new self-cota or municipal laws that are taking place. So, I will leave the public hearing open, if there's anybody else that wants to speak in favor of or against, this is your opportunity. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing, and Shane, I think you should maybe go over it again, just kind of go through the whole spiel.
Okay. Okay, so, the proposed ordinance amendment was initiated by, through discussion with the planning commission, and the idea of it was that we've, as a community, moved towards cleaning up our residential districts. In other words, we, we've set specific locations for campers and fish houses and other accessory vehicles, or whatever we want to call them, but, and, and part of this RG district is, if we allow this larger garage, and it's only in the RG district that we're proposing this, but the maximum height of an RV, for instance, is 14 and a half feet, that's the largest RV they make. But a standard garage at 10 foot is what the normal garage height was previous to this, would not allow those vehicles to be parked inside. So, that was recognized by members of the planning commission, and so this was an idea on how to maybe get a few more of those vehicles inside, rather than having them parked outside cluttering up our community. So, that, that's how it was initiated, and then, so we, we did revise a few other items, as long as we were revisiting that. One of the previous requirements was that it had to have 100% of the surrounding property owners also in favor of it. We reduced that to 55%, which is more along lines with our assessment procedures, so that way, it just takes a simple majority to allow it, not, not the 100% participation. Then, we, let's see. We also gave the building official the discretionary right to make sure that the buildings look appropriate to the neighborhood that they're being constructed in, we didn't want them to look like a machine shed or something gaudy either, so, so we do have some oversight on, on the finishes. We did talk about what size a structure could be there, and we settled on 30% of a lot size, rather than, you know, a square footage. We kind of felt that on a larger lot, maybe a larger building would be allowed, rather than just go, our previous language just had a standard size that was allowed, and we thought that that needed to be a little bit more flexible as well. So, with that, is there anything you want to add, Pat?
Shane, I got a question for you, maybe Pat would answer it too, but, what do we, did we, what are the setbacks for those again? For, I was trying to look through, I didn't see it, I apologize if I missed it.
Nine foot is a side yard setback.
Pat, since you're right there. Pat Driver, thanks for coming, thanks for coming.
How are you?
Fine, thank you very much. What are, is this gonna make a difference in what we do with, with a setback, if we're gonna go to that?
We, we could, and we can talk about that here, that was something I talked to Shane about today that we didn't discuss. We talked about it, but we didn't put it in here. What we found is, oh, it's been five, six years ago, when Mike, Bruce, myself, we were on there together, we put the RG Garage District together, the idea, the concept was it would sit on the outside of a development where people can buy, buy a lot, put a garage, we had to limit it 2180 for square footage, so we're just short of 2200 square foot with a 10-foot sidewall as big as it could be. It has to, the building material has to meet the same materials as the R1 single-family residential district. What we found is, it wasn't being used, and the people that were coming to us weren't really on the fringes of these, these developments, and those developments haven't added those in. So what we're doing is we're retrofitting other areas of town where there were lots put together that were sold as R1 lots, that don't have sewer, don't have water, don't have improved roads. These guys generally have 15,000 to 20,000 square foot lots. Our minimum, our minimum lot size is 7,500 square feet, and the maximum building is 2180 square feet. What we found is, if you got a 20,000 square foot lot, and you're putting a 2,000 square foot building that's got 10-foot sidewalls, it's a little bitty building on a big, and it doesn't serve the purpose that we intended it to do. So, what we did is, we came back and said, let's allow, and we went between 14 and 16-foot sidewalls, and what it came to was, in order to use a 14-foot sidewall and put these bigger rigs in there, you have to come in from the end, not from the sides, and they're not aesthetically as pleasing, or you gotta put dormers on them, which are about four grand in dormers, so that pushes the costs up. So we settled back and said, let's go with 16-foot sidewall. The one thing that we did is, we said, we, they still have to use the same building materials as a conventional home. We said, we want two-foot overhang, so it can't be a box. We said, if the walls are greater than 12 feet or longer than 20 feet, they have to be articulated, which means you have to have a jog in your wall, so someone doesn't build a 50-foot building that's just one 50 by 16-foot wall, to try to make them aesthetically pleasing. The question was, we didn't change the setbacks, and when I talked to Shane today, I said, you know, I wouldn't be opposed to saying, your setback has to be nine feet or your sidewall height, whichever's greater, which means if you have a 16-foot building, you got a 16-foot setback. If, if it's a larger building, it's gonna have to be on a larger lot. We looked at a 20% lot coverage first. Now, if you're building a home in the same R1 district, you can have 100% lot coverage inside your setbacks. We're saying you can only have a 30% lot coverage, that way, we're still not putting a huge building on a small lot. We looked at 20%, but we found lots between 7,500 and 12,500, we weren't giving them anything. They were still stuck with a 2,100 square foot building. So, that's kind of where we've come around, we found that the people that, we've asked them to take these large, a pontoon boat, just a 22-foot pontoon with a, with a top, can't fit in a, in a 10-foot sidewall, it can't fit in a nine-foot garage door. So, that's what they've come back to us, and we, the garage district really hasn't been used much since we put it in.
I, I think it makes a lot of sense, Pat, to, to expand on that, those setbacks, because of that, you don't want to be, be in a position where you deprive another lot of sunlight.
The taller the wall with a two-foot overhang, you get two inches of rain, you don't want to dump that rain on the neighbors' lot. So, and, and I do think if, if, if I had a lot, you don't like somebody building something really tall. Now, on the other side of the coin is, I can build a two-story house with a 32-foot peak, nine feet from the lot line. But we, these are storage structures, morally, and some people have said, well, then they're not a garage if they're that big. That's true, but it's in a garage, we call it a garage district, but it's really more.
Aesthetically, it's still a gra, or, looks more like a garage, and it does a storage.
Trying to, you know, they can put a steel roof on it, but they can't put steel siding, because that's not an approved building material. And then what we did do is, we put that caveat in there, that the building inspector has the final say to make sure that it does fit the, the aesthetics of the neighborhood, because it's, they're really not in the neighborhood, they're across the road from a neighborhood normally, but. Our goal was, is that you'd hope you have a new, a new development, and the fringe lots might have some of these storage structures for people to take their equipment in and out.
Well, the key is, if you develop the area with areas like this there, then you know what's there going into it. It's not something that comes later, and so being proactive versus reactive and dealing with it. But, here's a question I have in regards to what, what's gonna be asked of us tonight. I, I agree with Bruce, and, and your suggestion seems, at least at face value, seems reasonable, Pat, but, so, what do we do with what we have before us in regards to that requirement? Do we make that change, or do you think that should go back to the?
I, I think, you know, I think you guys can add that in, and I, I don't, I've talked to a few members of the planning commission, said, you know, we, we could've, if anyone was apprehensive of that tall sidewall, we are setting that building further back. I think Justin would probably be the person to answer it, can they add that in? Because the planning commission, it's just a recommendation to the city.
That, that's my understanding as well, it doesn't, you know, every change doesn't require an immediate sort of fall back into the hands of the planning commission. The particular ordinance we're dealing with in terms of whether another reading is needed for, or another meeting for action is SDCL 9-19-7.1. And what we have here is a requirement that the body cannot act upon and revised ordinance, proposed ordinance.
Right.
You know, right, right away, if there's a change between the first reading and the second reading, then there has to be another meeting, which there's an action. So, in, in terms of proposing something tonight.
First reading again.
What's that?
I said, put it in, and bring it back, and we'll have first reading on it again.
That, that.
Unless you have something that's absolutely trying to get going, I don't think there is, so.
No, we, we were just trying to be proactive, because we knew that building season was coming, and if people knew it, if somebody had building plans and they wanted to change that sidewall. The one other thing too, is we hadn't run into any problems with the 85, 55%. We just said, you know, when we started it, we didn't know it was a new ordinance, and we were just gonna tweak it as we went, and this is just a tweak, we haven't had anyone apply that couldn't get a certain number. We just felt 55 is more consistent with the rest of our ordinance.
Pat, do you have another meeting before our next, over here, before our next council meeting?
Thursday.
Okay, it's just a board of adjustment meeting, but that's the same guy, so.
So that you might discuss this, one of my questions I got, and you can build a two-story house, and it's a nine-foot setback, so you could have a 20-foot wall, so, I just, I, you know, I don't know what impact that might have or not, I don't necessarily disagree with part of the concept, but if you're saying 16 feet, that would be seven more feet setback, right? Than current, what you're talking currently.
We, we can, we can discuss it, and if it's gonna go back to a first reading anyway.
Yeah. You, you don't need to have full notification on this though, do you?
Okay, so we, as I understand, and Justin and I have talked about this, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but if we make substantive changes, all it requires is that we bring it back for the first and second readings, and we would do another public hearing at whatever the second, the second reading would be. You know, so, I think if we just step back, perfect the language at the staff level, we can have a discussion at the board of adjustment with those folks, I have no problem with that. That's this Thursday, we'll have a discussion about it, but it's now in staff's hands, and we can amend it however the council wishes, and then we'll just restart the first and second readings for, for the April meetings, and I think that will, will bring this to a conclusion. So, I'll bring it up as an old business item at the board of adjustment meeting on Thursday, and we'll fine tune the language and, and bring it back to you.
You know, one of the things I'd like you to look at, and I'm struggling with this point on this whole thing, because here we're, we're taking a look at a garage that's gonna be 16-foot high on the sides, and to make it look nice, we need to articulate something on the sides, but yet we allow apartment complexes to go in that are three stories tall, and it's just a block, a box look. I think we should almost look at something in the same, the same sort of this here, that there is some articulation on a big apartment complex, a big apartment house. I don't know what you guys think of that.
Well, I, I will.
It needs to be looked at.
I will say this, Steve, I mean, that is, that's an R3 district, and that's sort of a, an expectation, I think, when you go into a multi-dwelling type facility like that, I, that's just a part of it. I do think.
But it's not, it's not required.
Well, and I know that set, or, height, height requirements are typically just, it's a trigger. If you wanted to, you can actually go, and you can get a higher, you can ask for a variance to get a higher.
I'm saying more, not on the height, I'm talking about the articulation of the building, what it looks like from the outside. So, when you have the 20 feet, if it's 20 foot, you need to have something that is out, in or out. And I, I would like to see us at least, as a body, look at that, and maybe you guys as, as the planning commission, will take a look at it.
We'll bring it up, we'll have staff look at it. The one difference between these, the garages, the apartments normally have windows and doors, and where, where our fear was on this, and I think we visited a little bit about it, is if a person didn't want to articulate, could they put windows in, or something, just so somebody's not looking down the road and seeing that long 60-foot sidewall with nothing in it but brown, or.
I do agree that it's, there is a difference between a, a house that's built, and is maybe the same height or taller, but the features of a home typically are different than this. And I, I know where Steve is coming from with this deal, and I would hate to see us be able to take some long building and just say, okay, plunk a window in there, and that looks okay. I, I think the articulation that is within the ordinance now, I think, is a good idea. I do like, Steve, the idea that we may need to take a look at that on certain size of, of multi-use, or multi-house.
Right.
Type building, you know, just to break it up a little bit.
At least look at it, and see if there's something we can do. The last thing I think we don't want to do is add a whole lot of cost to a construction site, but you can do some things that I think should be done, so if you do that, Pat, I think that'd be great.
Okay, so. So I'll bring back some language for our first reading, and we can all hopefully agree with that. The only other clarification I want to point out in here that I haven't discussed is, we did allow sewers to be installed these now, because there was a desire, if, if people are using these facilities to clean fish, or work on a car, or a boat, or something like that, and they're gonna be all messy and, and dirty, the ability to clean up before they come home was, was a desired thing. So we, we did make that minor tweak in here as well. Now, it can't be a dwelling, I mean, there are limitations, we, you can't set up shop and have a kitchen and a living room and that kind of, living quarters in there at all, so, just for that clarification. So, I'll bring some language back, we'll visit with them at the board of adjustment, and you'll see a first reading on the next agenda.
So, mayor, do we, what do we have to do with what's on our agenda right now? Do we vote it down, or do we?
There's no action.
We do nothing, no action.
Nothing with it?
No action, no.
Okay. Thanks for that, Shane. Good luck in that pizza. All right, we're gonna move on to number seven, first reading of ordinance number 17-13. First reading of ordinance number 1713, removing chapter 7.13 of the revised ordinances of the City of Watertown. What's that? Uh, to dissolve the Civic and Recreation Board and place the Prairie Lakes Wellness Center under the Park and Recreation Board. Uh, this is a first reading. Uh, Justin, you went through it a little earlier today. Uh, maybe we should just touch base on it once more.
Certainly, Mayor. Absolutely. The rationale for this change is in state statute. When we had the Watertown Recreational Center, it existed within the joint use facility effectively with a portion of that facility being utilized by housing, the, the services provided by another local governmental body, that being the school district. As a result of that unique arrangement between two governmental entities, the, uh, the Civic and Recreation Board was created utilizing unique state law designed for that purpose. To create a board that incorporates both governing bodies, representatives thereof, in making decisions for that joint use structure. As a result of the creation of the Prairie Lakes Wellness Center and the transplanting of the Recreation Center's facilities to the Wellness Center, there is no longer then going to be a need for the city to utilize the space. As a result, there is no longer going to be a joint jurisdictional sharing of that space. And so there is no need, legally speaking, for a Civic and Recreation Board that has authority over some city function. In this case, the Wellness Center, the Prairie Lakes Wellness Center, uh, is a purely city, uh, facility. And so it should be per state law placed under the auspices of the Recreation Board, which is our Parks and Recreation Board. And that is what this ordinance is designed to do.
Okay. Thank you, Justin. I appreciate it. Moving on. Number eight, authorization for the Finance Office to issue, issue a special check to the Watertown Area Transit in the amount of $8,970 to be paid from contingency funds. This actually was on our agenda last year. And we had approved, I believe, $10,000 for a new transit bus. They did go ahead and, and got the bus this year. So last year's action that you guys approved could not carry forwards because it is on contingency funds. We can't carry anything forward on that. So what we're looking for tonight is the authorization to, to do this. And I am going to look for a motion in a second for any additional discussion. Motion by Beth, second by Mike. So have you guys got any questions on this?
Basically what, it was just basically a delay in delivery of the vehicles. The building and delivery of the vehicles, we figured it'd be in last year, but never came in until this spring, so.
Perfect, and it's a great vehicle. So are you going to vote on this?
No, I will recuse myself from this vote.
Okay. So I'm looking for council action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Number nine, consideration of bids from the wastewater treatment facility digester rehab project. Uh, Shane, you want to jump all over that for us?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. The Engineering Department is assisting the wastewater facility folks in opening and awarding these bids. The consultant is Howard R. Green Incorporated. Uh, they were hired in December of 2015 to provide engineering services to evaluate the di- digesters out at the wastewater facilities. And the route that was chosen was to do a rehabilitation, which essentially means they're going to want to take these out of service one at a time. They'll empty the structures of the digester sludge, evaluate the insides, inspect them. And the idea is that we're going to repaint or repair whatever needs attention. And however, if, if for some reason the inspection process would lead us to a deeper, larger project, then we would probably come back to you and request that we'll find a way to end this, this bid and then relaunch into a new bid, a new direction, so forth. So with that, the engineering company did come up with a, a very comprehensive inspection and, and project here that would bring these back into more than serviceable lifetime if we do not find significant obstacles in that. So with that, we took bids on March 2nd. And just for clarification, my, on paragraph two of my memo, the numbers don't add up and I apologize for that. Um, I think I had a typing error in there. But the official engineer's estimate is shown correctly on the bid tabulation and that number is $997,543. Uh, we did receive several bids on the project as shown by the bid tab. The bid submitted by Industrial Process Tech was rejected because they had some irregularities in it. And what those irregularities were is they actually had a couple of bid, bid items that they put no value in there. And the scope of that work where they put no value in was such that there's no way that they could possibly approach a project with zero costs to recover their expenses in that. So it was identified that that wasn't a valid bid because of that reason. And so we have made the recommendation that PKG Contracting Incorporated out of Fargo, North Dakota be awarded the bid in the total bid amount of $1,143,000. Any questions?
Shane, is it possible that their bottom line is correct?
On the, on the rejected bid?
Yeah.
No, we visited with them. They, they said they made a mistake.
Oh, they did, okay.
Yep.
Any other questions for Shane? Hearing none, I will look for council action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I don't know.
Motion carries.
We never had him, no.
Oh, I thought I did.
I, I thought I spaced it off, but no.
Okay. Let's start over. I have a motion by Bruce. A second by Glenn. Any questions? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried? Okay. Number 10, old business. Anybody got any old business they want to throw out there? I would like to throw one little thing. Uh, report a pothole. We did get report a pothole on the city's website. So if anybody sees one, you know, we can't see them all the time. Our guys don't notice them all the time. But if you see something that is just jumping out at you and wrecking your car, get on the city website and put it on there.
Just be clear that the city, the city doesn't handle the potholes in the middle of the state highways. So.
That is correct. If it's 81, 212, 20, such as that, we, we do not fill those potholes. Once in a while we have though, we've gone out and we've done those, those fillings if the state is asked.
I would imagine if it's bad enough, we're still going to go out and take care of it and let them.
And, and what happens now, just so you understand, when you report a pothole, it does go directly to the street department. I expect they've had a lot of notification about potholes. So they'll get back to you and, and they'll try to get these things fixed. But please just let them know what, what's going on and what you're seeing. Anything else? Any other old business?
Just, just a question, Steve. Uh, anything gets started out at the landfill yet on that repair of that cell? Has it been, the weather got nice enough yet or?
No, we're still waiting for the weather to improve.
Any new business that you want to talk about?
Steve, just a reminder that next Monday is a countywide vote on Ordinance 65. And tomorrow afternoon at 5:30 at the Event Center is a, a forum discussion concerning that vote.
Uh, yeah, speaking of, the mayor and I talked about it a little bit before the meeting. And Steve, maybe you want to kind of clarify what yes and no means for the public on that vote.
Yeah, it's, it's an interesting vote. You know, as you know, Ordinance 65 actually took care of all the ordinances through Ordinance 30, I believe. And what's happened here is that there, there was an issue that came about, about CAFOs. And, and I'm just going to give a little history on this. So the organizations that wanted to get rid of the, the sites, you know, the, the length, the distance, the setbacks on the CAFOs, wanted to strike this one line out. And by actually going through and proposing that one line to come out, they actually, what happened was it voided out all the ordinances that, that the county has had from, gosh, I think it was 2001. So what's happening here is that if you vote no, the county needs to then go back in and, and go through each and every ordinance to try to bring it back onto the books. And it's going to take an extremely long time for them. Because 99.9% of the ordinances are, are good ordinances. The one that is being looked at is the CAFO ordinance. And frankly, by, by this vote would not change it. And, and in, in all reality, if you vote no on this, it will allow CAFOs to become closer to your residence than it is right now. The ordinance back in 2001 had a lesser setback than what, what the county has installed. So my recommendation, and because this is, this is far-reaching, this reaches out to the flood plain, the, where people have their houses in the flood plain. They have to have FEMA flood insurance. If this goes away, uh, the county has, has no flood insurance for you. So if we have an act of God, a, a storm that comes through, a tornado or something like that that could cost easily millions of dollars, the county will have no insurance. You will have no insurance on your homes or on your, on your, basically your property. Now, that's if you have a mortgage on your place. So, and even if you do not have a mortgage on your place, the county would not have coverage for that kind of a catastrophic event.
They would not be able to file for a emergency declaration or?
That is correct.
Just for clarification, that's, he's making reference to all parcels outside of the city limits of Watertown. We have our own sedes rules in our.
Yeah, this is not affecting the, the City of Watertown proper because we have this. Now, you, you know, we did, of course, go through our, our three mile. We have a, a working agreement with the county and everything is good through that. Uh, but, but it will not help the people that would be affected by, by flood insurance or catastrophic, catastrophic event. My recommendation would to, what I'm going to do, and I'm just going to throw it out there. I'm going to go vote yes on Ordinance 65 so that the county will have the ability to go in and work on these ordinances if there's some tweaking, if there's some things that need to be done. We need to allow them to do their jobs.
I've already visited with three people from Air Haven that have all talked to their bankers and say that their mortgage will be called in if, if that went through. So because they will not be covered under flood insurance, so.
We have several significant places outside the city limits as well that if something were to happen to them and we voted no against this ordinance, they would not be able to rebuild until all the ordinances were redone.
Also, just a day in the mail, I won't say where it came from, but we received a notice that somebody looking for a building permit would not be able to get a building permit uh, i- if this were to not.
Yeah, they'd have to cease, cease everything, so. So if a business outside the city limits of Watertown were burned down, they would not be able to rebuild their business until all these, this was taken care of, so.
So it's far-reaching, so we need to be aware of that. And, and I would just, I would just recommend that we vote yes on Ordinance 65. Allow your county commissioners to do their job. I truly don't think they want to put a CAFO in your backyard and, and I think they, they probably will be looking at that ordinance anyhow.
Steve, you might want to just real quick explain what a CAFO is for the public.
Oh, it's a confined animal, uh, feeding operation. So it can be anywhere from, from cattle to pigs to chickens to turkeys, you name it. As long as they're confined, they're in that. Yeah. Thanks for stating that, Bruce. Okay. Any liaison member reports?
I just got one, uh, being we were talking about the transit earlier. Uh, 1st of April, the Watertown Area Transit will go back to Saturday service. We're going to give it another shot. Uh, we feel that our ridership has grown enough over the past few years that, that, we've tried it in the past and there wasn't enough participation. But we feel with doing some surveys throughout the community that there is going to be enough participation. So hopefully it works out for us, so.
Good. I did want to bring it up. I mentioned it in the work session about allowing corporations, companies to move forward with, uh, gifts that they want to give to the City of Watertown. Specifically on this particular one, they're looking at $100,000 give to the City of Watertown over a five-year period. It'd be $20,000 a year. They need to get their, their stickers made or whatever you want to call them that goes on the walls. And I'd like to tell them tonight to go ahead and, and move forward with that. But in order to bring the actual contract in front of you, we have to put that on the council agenda. So are you guys okay with that? Are we looking at, are we okay with that? Okay. I'm going to do that. Very good. Uh, no need to go into executive session.
Mayor, just before you end here, I have made a decision to run for Ward E. seat again this next year. And so I'll be taking out a petition. I'm really excited about the fact that the city is looking really hard at the lake right now. I think the, where, when I went, when I was canvassing earlier, the lake was a real concern. And I think it's a lot more of a concern today than it was four years ago. And so that's really is going to be my top priority if I win is to make some difference out at the lake because it really needs help.
All right, well, congratulations. Thank you. It'll be good. Um, no need to go into executive session, I said. So I would look for a motion, a second to adjourn. Motion by Randy, second by Beth. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you.